Aloha and mahalo for joining. My name is David Sakota and I'm the Fisheries Program Manager for the State of Hawaii, Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquatic Resources. I will be conducting tonight's public hearing along with the DAR staff at our in-person host site. It is now five thirty-six P M. And this public hearing is called to order. One moment while I share my screen. Okay, this is a formal statewide public hearing on the proposed amendment of Hawaii Administrative Rules, Chapter thirteen dash sixty point four, West Hawaii Regional Fishery Management Area Hawaii. The proposed amendments would, one, add the definition of pakui kuui to the definition section of the chapter. Two, make it unlawful to take or possess any pakui kuui before December seventeenth, twenty thirty-six. And three, make other non-substantive amendments to the chapter, such as the addition of the Milolii Community-Based Subsistence Fishing Area Hawaii, H A R Chapter thirteen dash sixty point ten to the list of designated areas in subsection C of H A R thirteen dash sixty point four dash two, Geographical Jurisdiction of Chapter Provisions. As required by law, the proposed rules have been drafted in Ramser format, copies of which can be found in the announcements section of the DAR website. Those attending the meeting in person may ask DAR staff for a copy. This public hearing is being simultaneously livestreamed to the DAR YouTube channel for anyone wishing to observe the public hearing but not provide testimony. For your convenience, the address to the DAR YouTube channel is at the top of this slide, and a link to the livestream has also been pasted into the chat. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public the opportunity to provide comments in the form of oral and written testimony on these proposed amendments. Approval to conduct this public hearing was obtained from the Board of Land and Natural Resources at their board meeting on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. The legal notice of this public hearing was published in the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four Sunday issue of the Honolulu Star Advertiser. Additionally, notice of this public hearing was posted on the Draft Rules and Public Notices page of the DAR website, where digital copies of the draft rule in Ramser format can be found, as well as posted on the announcements page of the DAR website. First, I will explain the proposed administrative rules. We will then begin the public testimony period, which will be conducted as follows. Everyone testifying via Zoom was required to pre-register in order to get the link to testify. We will keep registration open throughout the public hearing, and we'll monitor our email in case anyone has trouble registering or joining the Zoom meeting to provide their testimony. However, if you are unable to join via Zoom, you may still provide oral testimony at the in-person hearing location listed on the slide, or you may submit written testimony by following the directions at the bottom of the slide. Everyone testifying in person at the host site should have written their information down on the sign-in sheet provided at the host site. Those attending in person who have not signed up to testify but would like to provide testimony can alert the DAR public hearing officer at the in-person site at this time, and your name will be added to the list. It is important that everyone who wishes to testify provide their name and contact information, so we have an accurate record of everyone providing testimony. You will be called upon by a member of the DAR staff when it's your turn to testify. We ask that all individuals attending virtually keep their microphones muted when not speaking. We will take testimony in the following order. First, we will take in-person testimony from people who have signed up to testify at our host site on Hawaii Island. And once all in-person testimony is gathered, we will take Zoom testimony. Please keep your testimony brief and on the subject to allow everyone the opportunity to testify. Each person providing testimony will be given three minutes. Please be aware that if you go beyond three minutes, I may kindly ask you to conclude your testimony. We are recording this hearing to make a complete and accurate record of the proceedings. So please state your full name before giving your testimony. Make sure to speak clearly, so we accurately record your testimony for the record. Please turn off the livestream, the live YouTube stream of this hearing while testifying, as it will cause an echo. Please remember to respect the opinions of all testifiers, and that this hearing is not an opportunity for accusations or rebuttals. There may be differing opinions. Everyone will have an opportunity to voice their opinion for the department to consider. All testimony should be directed to me, not to the audience. Once again, please note that this hearing is simultaneously being streamed on YouTube. The livestream will be recorded and preserved on YouTube as a matter of public record. Please be aware that by offering your oral testimony today, you are consenting to being audio-recorded and video-recorded if your camera is on. Let's begin with a brief background explaining the proposed administrative rules. Proposed amendments to Hawaii Administrative Rules, Chapter thirteen dash sixty point four, West Hawaii Regional Fishery Management Area Hawaii. Section two of the West Hawaii Regional Fishery Management Area, or WRFMA, rules. The geographic jurisdiction section is being amended to include the Milolii Community-Based Subsistence Fishing Area in the list of areas that are considered regulated as part of the WRFMA in thirteen dash sixty point four dash two C. This is considered a housekeeping amendment in that the amendment is only reflecting what is already established in law. Section three of the WRFMA rules, the definition section, is being amended to add a definition for pakui kuui. Pakui kuui means any fish known as echinotherus Achilles or any recognized synonym. Pakui kuui is also known as Achilles tang. Section four of the WRFMA rules is the Prohibited Activities section. DAR proposes to amend this section to include regulations on the take and possession of pakui kuui. Specifically, the proposed amendment to this section would make it unlawful to take or possess any pakui kuui before December seventeenth, twenty thirty-six. In other words, the proposed amended rule would establish a twelve-year moratorium on the take of pakui kuui in West Hawaii. Originally, DAR had proposed to establish a two-year moratorium on the take of pakui kuui through December eighteenth, twenty twenty-six, followed by a ten-year period that included a proposed bag limit of four pakui kuui per person per day, as well as a mandatory pakui kuui fisher registration and reporting requirement. DAR presented this proposal to the Board of Land and Natural Resources at its meeting on September twenty-seventh. At that meeting, the board decided to modify the proposed rule to change the proposed bag limit from four to zero and directed DAR to collect public feedback on the bag limit number at this public hearing. Due to the proposed bag limit being changed to zero for the ten-year period following the proposed two-year moratorium, DAR has amended the proposed rule language to reflect a proposed twelve-year ban on the take of pakui kuui in West Hawaii. However, DAR is seeking specific feedback on whether there should be a bag limit for pakui kuui from December nineteenth, twenty twenty-six through December eighteenth, twenty thirty-six, what inappropriate bag limit number would be, and whether there is support for mandatory pakui kuui fisher registration and reporting requirement to provide DAR with information about pakui kuui catch and effort in West Hawaii to inform future management decisions. We have now reached the testimony portion of this public hearing. As a reminder, the address to the DAR YouTube channel is at the top of this slide, and a link to the livestream has also been pasted into the chat. If you just want to listen in to this hearing without providing testimony, you're welcome to log off this Zoom meeting and view the YouTube livestream of this hearing. You will be called, if you remain in the Zoom, you'll be called upon by a member of the DAR staff when it is your turn to testify. We ask that all individuals attending virtually keep their microphones muted when not speaking. As I mentioned earlier, we'll take testimony in the following order. First, we'll take in-person testimony from people who have been signed up to testify at the in-person host site in Kona. Once all in-person testimony is gathered, we will take Zoom testimony. As a reminder, please keep your testimony to three minutes in order to ensure that everyone who signed up has a chance to give testimony. If there's extra time at the end of everyone on the list and you would like more time to testify, we will allow those who already spoke to give additional testimony. I'll now stop sharing my screen, so everyone providing testimony can be clearly seen. Okay, we'll first take any in-person testimony in Kona. So Chris, can you call up the testifiers in the order that they have signed up to testify? Can you unmute the host site computer, please?
Can you hear us, David?
Yes. Aloha, please state your name and you can begin providing your testimony.
Yeah, my name is Damian Kenison from Kaua Kohekena, Sa'kona, Hawaii. My testimony is more of a question as to why or how did we come to this, to this situation? Why are the pakui so depleted? And why hasn't, why has DAR not found out the reason why? And, and regulate the users who are doing the most damage to the population? And let the Hawaiians who harvest these fish for, for mahai sustainably? We don't waste, we don't take more than we need, and we don't eat it every day. So why is it depleted? Why punish us? My suggestion is, you look at the other stakeholders. The aquarium collectors, the commercial fishers, and the, the other subsistence fishes, which I'm including the, the other Pacific island communities that, that are here. Especially the Micronesians. I'm not trying to point, point the finger at them, but they eat fish for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And they harvest, they like to spearfish at night. I don't think DAR has done a good job of educating them or keeping them aware of the rules or, or or try to develop a, a method of communication with the, with the local people. So we could, they could understand our cultural boundaries and we could understand theirs. So to deny us to harvest these fish, that's not pono. If you like regulate, I mean, regulate, put a, put a stakeholders are doing the most damage, but you leave the Hawaiians alone. I have a longer version of my testimony, which I will submit at this time. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Alex Kirkin.
William Maehuihui.
Aloha.
My name is William Maehuihui. I'm from Milolii. Same as Uncle David, just a few questions about the bag limits. I understand that the state is coming to decision still. So I request that we have more public scoping meetings, have more community come, because as tonight, I don't see very much community members here. So that's one request, that we have another scoping meeting. For the ten years, I, I feel that's gonna be quite hard. But I also agree, because there is not much data known on pakui kuui. As being a kilo kilo DAR from Milolii, even we are also gathering our own data. But I also feel that you guys also have a lot more hands and feet than we do. So I feel that more collaboration between the both of us is needed. We share the same values and the same drive to share and save our communities. So I just ask that you guys do more outreach to the communities, not only us, but with other fishers on the north and east shores. There's not only, is it just us, but also people come and travel to our size of the islands as well to harvest, because we do have the most common waters on states. Just more outreach and information is wanted and to be shared, and that's all I appreciate. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Hello, David.
Aloha.
From Milolii, Milolii CBSFA's Marine Monitoring and Outreach Coordinator. I wanna support it, I really do. Coming back and hearing about the extended ten with the optional bag limit of zero really got me stumped. I understand that, you know, more information is needed, more knowledge is needed to understand these species, which means that more work needs to be done. Yeah. Which also means more time, but an additional ten years to, to what has already been proposed is probably not the best way to go. Yeah. Hard for Kanaka to stay sustainable when it's at zero and for an extended two years. But, you know, I, I wanna support the two-year extended moratorium with the collaboration of a CBSFA, other communities within West Hawaii, alongside with DAR, to gain more knowledge of what can be done for West Hawaii that better suits West Hawaii. Yeah, the impact is West Hawaii. And West Hawaii is where it's mostly the ono for. So we gotta find that balance, yeah, what is, what is best to suit the communities within West Hawaii. But, yeah, the outreach probably could have been a little bit more more loud. Yeah, what Willie had mentioned, you know, there isn't much community members of West Hawaii here tonight. And, you know, that's kind of what we need. And to keep the bag limit at zero, with what is here tonight, to be that set, I don't think that's pono. Yeah, we probably need more communication with community members within West Hawaii, so that we could hear more of what it is that best suits us. But mahalo nui.
Hey, mahalo.
My name is Steve Kaiser, fisherman from Apavee Side. I wanna go back to the original data that was collected on this species. In nineteen ninety-five, there seemed to be a lot of pakui. In nineteen ninety-six, there was none, and it's remained stable for the next twenty-plus years. Hasn't gone up, hasn't gone down appreciably. My question is, is, you know, how did all of this just disappear? I'm gonna go back and say that the nineteen ninety-five data was an error. It was never that high. And basing it on that, to sit there and say there's no pakui kuui now, there is pakui kuui. I'm also distressed to see that all of a sudden, you're talking about over a ten-year closure. For what? If, if the state isn't gonna do anything to try and figure out why it's low, I don't believe it's low. There's still pakui kuui out there. I, I, I don't understand why it's going down, and now as a, as a sort of a a giveaway to us who are fishermen to sit there and say, oh, we can talk about bag limits, when it's already written in here. It's already written in here, twenty thirty-six. The, the second thing I'll say is this is, I never eat a pakui kuui in my life. I eat plenty of koli. This is a west-side Hawaii thing, where the people over here, the locals, wanna eat pakui kuui. It's a local issue. We don't need laws to take care of the ohana that's already here. I mean, that's just, and it's laws that are not being enforced. I knew, I know, guys, I talked to about this thing, they didn't even know that pakui kuui was closed for the last two years. So we're making laws that nobody even knows. It's just wrong. That, that's my point, but I wanna go back to, we should be basing things on science. We had only one year that it was high. After that, it's been stable for the next twenty-plus years. And if you do believe it's low, then the state is, should be under the auspices of doing something to make it better. They're not doing nothing. So just, if, if you wanna put a bag limit, let's talk about bag limits, but then just arbitrarily just throw ten-year closure. That's, that's just wrong. That's my five cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
How's it? My name is Jonah Marx. I'm a fourth-generation fisherman in my family, and I've grown up fishing and diving on this other island and Hilo Side my entire life. From the looks of it, just in this room, and from the looks of it at every other meeting I've been to in my life, I'm the youngest person that shows up. That means everyone here, they've seen information and data taken from before I was around. I hear the stories from before I was around, and I see the change from then to now. This ten-year ban is not for these people. Granted, there are people here are going to eat pakui kuui for the next ten years. There are people here who are going to live off the ocean, the day they die, because that's how we were born and raised. But in ten years, many people here will be really relying on my generation for the fish that they eat. There are many things wrong with this proposal. Starting off is with one of the things Uncle Steve Kaiser just said. Pakui kuui's been closed for two years. You know how many people I've seen take pakui kuui in the last two years? What makes you think that a ten-year closure, number one, anyone's gonna listen to it, and number two, is gonna be enforced? When locals like me, Uncle Steve, Uncle Al, we try to help this situation, we call Dill and I when we see things that are going on that's illegal, we call Dill and I and say, eh, two months ago, eh, there was a guy throwing at it on Call Harbor. He has a six-foot net with half-inch eye. Half-inch eye is two inches under the legal size limit for eye. You know what Dill and I told us? Okay, we'll see if somebody can come down. If that's how it's gonna be, what's the point of the ten years? If we're not gonna get the support in the first place, nobody's gonna give a shit about the rules. Okay? Another note is, where is the data that supports a complete ban? Because in the past year, it's changed. This is gonna be the third time it's been considered change. It was brought to my attention that there was a Zoom meeting held a few months ago, said in the Zoom that says there is little to no data on pakui kuui. If there is little to no data, how is that supporting a complete ban in any way whatsoever? That's just putting the wrong premise out there for people. That's letting the community know, say, eh, we don't care what it actually is, we're gonna shut stuff down until we figure it out. Kind of like the bottom fishing ban or closed areas that we had for the past twenty-five years here in Hawaii. We had bottom fishing protected areas where you weren't allowed to bottom fish for decades. Then all of a sudden, they're just, oh, sorry, data was wrong. We're opening it up now. That right there let the community lose trust in the way things are done here in the state. And there was nothing learned off of that. As for bag limits, if there is data that supports a bag limit, the people who want populations to thrive and survive the most are the fishermen. We aren't fishermen without the fish. Plain and simple. If there is da- data that supports eh, six fish bag limit per person, we'll support it. If there is data that says, okay, we gotta bring it down a little bit, and we actually see an improvement, we'll support it. But to just outright shut it down is, excuse my language, was complete bullshit. It really is. Um, as for the registration, okay, I'll make, this is my last point. I have a question about the registration, because we already have commercial fishing registrations, bottom fishing registrations, aquarium registrations that we have to pay for. Are we gonna have to pay for registrations for every fish that we shoot and want to eat from now on? Because just like every other registration there is, we have to pay for it. My commercial fishing license is a hundred and ten dollars a year. Am I gonna have to pay another hundred and ten dollars for a pakui kuui registration? And if so, why is that money not being shown, coming directly back to the fishermen and the community? That's my final question.
Hey, thank you.
That's all I have on my list. Is there anybody else that'd like to testify in the, in person that hasn't done so yet? Okay, hearing nobody, I'll pass it back to David for Zoom testimony.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Okay, next, we're gonna take Zoom testimony, so if you have registered for this Zoom hearing, then we'll presume you're interested in providing testimony, and we will be calling your name in the order you have signed up. If you do not wish to provide oral testimony, please indicate so when we call your name or let us know through the chat feature. First, I have Addison Davis. I don't see on the Zoom. Lillian Tuttle Raz. Not on. Mary Donovan. Not on. Uh, let's see. Amber Data. Not wanting to testify. Okay, let's see. Sherry Sound- Sherry Salmon. Sherry, uh, if you wish to testify, can you unmute? Okay, um, let's move on. Corinne Grenner. Okay, thank you. Lauren Nicole.
I don't wish to testify, just here to observe and listen.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, I Ka'imi Kalpiko. Ka'imi, do you wanna provide testimony?
Uh, aloha, David. I wanted to, yes, if I could, um, shoot, I just jumped on to listen, but I wanted to just, um, to support, you know, a continuation of the, um, the ban for Pakukui.
Okay, mahalo. And Titus Salter, you wanna provide testimony?
Um, sorry, I joined late. I, I came to listen in, but what were the proposed rules? I, I couldn't find them listed in the, on the Instagram or anything.
Um, sure, real briefly, um, it's adding the definition of Pakukui uh, the housekeeping amendment to add the Milo Lei Community-Based Subsistence Fishing Area to the list of managed areas. And the substantive change is to create a 12-year no-take or possession of Pakukui in West Hawaii. And the explanation for that was that uh, the, we had originally proposed a two-year no-take followed by a 10-year period with a proposed bag limit. And along with that, um, a mandatory Pakukui free registration requirement and a reporting requirement so that DAR can collect data on Pakukui catch and effort. But when we presented it to the board for approval for public hearing, the board asked us to change the initial bag limit from four to zero for discussion purposes. Um, but we are seeking, uh, public feedback on what, if a bag limit should be in place, if it should be zero or a different number and if not zero, then what the number should be. So that's
Okay, I think I understand then. Um, yeah, I would definitely be in favor of, um, additional management and a bag limit that would, uh, allow the community to kinda contribute to the, um, the data collection. That, that sounds like it would be like super beneficial. A, a bag limit of zero, I think, would kind of um, disconnect the community as well as, uh, well, disconnect the like fishing community from the people establishing regulations uh, as well as make it more difficult to, or, you know, uh, hinder the ability of the scientific community to collect data. So I'd definitely be strongly in favor of having some sort of bag limit after the, uh, uh, after the initial, um, moratorium. Um, does that, does that suffice?
Yeah, thank you.
Cool, thanks, appreciate.
Okay, um, is there anyone else on the Zoom that I haven't called that wishes to provide testimony? Hearing none. Is there anyone who has testified, whether in person or on the Zoom, that wishes to provide additional testimony at this time? Chris, anyone at the host site wanna provide additional testimony?
Nobody at the host site.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, one more.
Great.
Like when, um, regarding the the licensing part. Um, the registry, right? Um, when did that decide to be a requirement? I thought that was gonna be voluntary. Um, anyway, you don't need to answer. My thing is probably not the best idea to a requirement. Yeah, for, um, the Kanakas especially. Yeah, it's a sustainable, I mean, it's a it's a practice thing. Yeah, cultural practice to harvest these, these species, but to require Kanaka to obtain such a thing to practice that is is, I, what I feel not the, the best way to approach it. But to leave it as voluntary as possible, maybe. Cause I highly doubt that there's fishermen out there who will give you much information on what it is that they'll catch, especially if they're into public. Thank you.
Hey, mahalo. Okay, anyone else?
Miss Housekeeping Measure for Milo Lei CBSA. It is a mishmash of very confusing rules. Milo Lei guys may know where everything is, but if you go down there on a boat and you wanna go fish, I'm not too sure even do-care agents can tell you what the actual rules are. We have so many restricted areas on the west Hawaii. This is just adding one more layer. Plus the overall rules that cover the whole coastline from Mupula Point all the way down to South Point. Guys, if you wanna have rules, have rules, but have rules that people can understand. It is crazy to think we got five separate areas, five separate rules, different depths, different areas, different species and everything. You know, one other thing about law enforcement, you gotta make it so that people can understand it. It is, it is a complete, my opinion here is a complete mess on the west side of Hawaii with all the rules, regulations and areas and more to come. This has to stop. It really does. You gotta, you gotta go with your GPS and look up what the actual marks are if you don't know the areas. I know everything from Kauai High up, all the valleys, all the coves and everything. I come corner side, I don't know. It's not my fault. There's so many different areas. We got 17, 20-something areas and even more to come. And then the Milo Lei gonna have all this? No, I know it's a fatal complete, you know, it's gonna happen and everything like that, but I just wanna get, get my take on this, that I am not for it. You know, the bastardization of the closed areas here, it's, it's become a commercial business. With all the nonprofits and everything else like that, they're all getting money.
Hey, Steve, you're, you're kinda getting off track of what the proposal is.
Well, it's a housekeeping measure for Milo Lei and I just saying, you know what, housekeeping or no housekeeping, it's still not right. So I thank you for the van, not gonna make no difference, I know that. But overall, you know, David, we gotta, we gotta look at West Hawaii as, you know, one complete thing and not just break it up. I know you heard my speech before in many meetings, but I just wanna make sure it's on here. It's a housekeeping measure, it's going through, I understand that, but it's still, still hurts me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Anybody else?
David, um, my name is Alex Kirkin. I'm a fisher from the east side. I guess for me, uh, living on the east side, I don't know this side that well, uh, but I've talked to a lot of fishers that fish for Pakukui, um, either for subsistence or, you know, for other means. Um, I just think the data has to drive the results of what bag limit we're gonna, we're, we are going to have. So if it's gonna be zero, has to be warranted. There has to be data that clearly states that it needs to be zero, or like others have said, like, if it's five, if it's 10, it just, it needs to be supported. Um, I have a hard time supporting something that we don't have data for. And another point that I wanted to make is that, you know, we're talking about Pakukui here, um, there's other species that are in way worse condition um, that are being depleted at rapid rates. Um, and just, I don't know where we go in the future, but could this lead to other closures of species that are being targeted as well? Just, I just want the data to drive, um, to be supported in the decisions that we're making. And that's the point of, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Back to you, David.
Okay, thank you. One moment. Okay. We will be accepting written testimony until Wednesday, November 20th, 2024. Please mail testimonies to the Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquatic Resources, 1151 Punch Bowl Street, Room 330, Honolulu, Hawaii 96813. Written testimony may also be submitted by email to dar.testimony@hawaii.gov and the email and postal address are provided on the slide. I'm now gonna briefly cover the extended timeline and our recommendations. This, this is a proposed, a projected timeline for these rules after this public hearing. Um, the dates are estimates, assuming that no significant changes to the proposal need to be made based on the testimony received. Based on all the testimonies presented, the department will submit its findings and recommendations to the Board of Land and Natural Resources. If approved by the board, the Department of the Attorney General will conduct the final legal review. And if approved, the proposed rules will be given to the governor for his final approval. And should the governor grant approval, certified copies will be filed with the Lieutenant Governor's Office and after 10 days, it becomes effective as law. Uh, are there any questions regarding the process? Okay, um, on behalf of the Board of Land and Natural Resources and the Division of Aquatic Resources, mahalo for attending this public hearing. It is now 6:18 PM and this public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you for taking time out from your day to participate in this public hearing. Aloha.